I'd like to call the September 25th meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order and ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
And Pledge of Allegiance to all five of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being taped for airing on DCTV and ask everyone to turn their cellphones onto silent, please. Ms. Boucher, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Dr. Karafotos?
Here.
Mrs. Amaral?
Here.
Mr. Nunes?
I'm here.
And Dr. Jenkins?
Here.
So at this time, we will open it up for public comment on any of the items on our agenda. If anybody wants to make a comment on one of those items, I'd ask you to walk up to the podium and identify yourself and speak your piece. Part where we all sit here awkwardly and we wait, we have sufficient time. All right, so hearing no public comment, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes. First of all, entertain a motion for the regular session minutes of September 11th.
So moved.
Second?
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, so that passes unanimously. Next, I will entertain a motion for approval of the executive session minutes of August 22nd, 2017.
So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Okay, so we have three in favor, an abstention from Dr. Karafotos and Mr. Nunes, who are not present. I'm glad we got that all sorted out.
So am I.
Yep.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is our student representative report. I understand a student has been selected, but very recently, and so we're going to allow her to ease into the role, and she will be attending our next meeting, at which point she will be giving us a full update on the opening of the year at the high school. So with that, we will move on to our school improvement plan presentations. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gifford to introduce everyone while I grab my glasses, because I forgot that part.
You need glasses, okay.
Okay, so our first presentation tonight will be by the Cushman School, and we invite Melissa McHenry, the director, to give us that presentation tonight.
Good evening. Thanks again for this opportunity to share a few focus areas that highlight some of the work that the Cushman staff will be doing this school year. So as you can see, under Teaching and Learning, professional development will be taking place on the reading and writing units of study and phonemic and phonological awareness. So what does that look like at the Cushman School? Well, currently, our kindergarten teachers are in year three of complete implementation of the Lucy Caukens units of study, and they're beginning their second full year of the Caukens Writers Workshop. So as a result of this professional development this year, they will be refining their practices related to these units of study, as well as concentrating on, focusing on conferencing with students in both reading and writing. So just a little bit of background on conferencing. This allows for targeted instruction around a student's strengths and weaknesses. So it can be done one-on-one with students, it can also be done in small groups. So it gives the teachers that opportunity to really reach the students, to move them forward. So as part of this work, a huge thank you goes out to Tracy Olivera for putting together a schedule within our district PD plan to allow this to happen with not only the kindergarten teachers at the Cushman School, but also throughout the district. So it's a nice way to align our practice. As far as phonemic and phonological awareness, that's taking place in both pre-K and kindergarten. So this past summer, the majority of the kindergarten teachers participated in a lively letters training over the summer in Dedham. And lively letters is a part of a reading program that teaches letters and sounds to students using colorful characters, handed body cues, stories, songs, all in a very fun and interactive way. So they received the training over the summer and will be implementing that program this year. For our preschool teachers, part of their professional development with me throughout the year is on the lively letters program, because what we learned at the summer training was that there's a nice pre-K component as well for specifically the four-year-old students, but something that the three-year-olds can be exposed to as well. So again, as far as teaching and learning, the goal for this year is that both of these actions lead to vertical alignment with our preschool and kindergarten, allowing for clearly articulated objectives in the areas of both reading and writing. As far as access and equity, we are in year two of implementing the social-emotional learning standards and approaches to play in pre-K and kindergarten. So again, we will continue that work, but this year, we're focusing on the differences between behavioral challenges and sensory needs, because sometimes with our littlest learners, those can look very similar. So this year, we have a preschool representative, a kindergarten representative, and our occupational therapist Kathleen DeCampos going off to a conference in October on this very topic. And they will then present at a few of our staff meetings this year some of what they learned from that conference about recognizing the differences and how to put some strategies in place for students, whether it's behavioral or sensory. Along with this work, we're also going to be taking a look at the Zones of Regulation curriculum. It's a curriculum that teaches students about self-regulation, emotional control, and we're looking as a staff as to how we can incorporate some of that in our preschool and our kindergarten, because it would be a nice bridge to the DeMello School where many of our kindergarteners, all of our kindergarteners and some of our preschoolers go, and they utilize the Zones of Regulation. So it would be a nice way to have a common language and some common strategies that the students can use. Also this year, along with our Second Step program, our social worker is going to be implementing an anti-bullying unit in kindergarten and a CPU unit in preschool and kindergarten, and CPU stands for Child Protection Unit, which is a safety awareness program. She is beginning her work already in classrooms by teaching some of the regular Second Step lessons, so that the first time she's going into the classroom isn't to teach the anti-bullying and CPU unit. And this was a lot of the work just in collaborating with my colleagues, that their social workers are going into classrooms and teaching Second Step. So what could that look like at the Cushman School? And it's a little challenging, because I only have someone two and a half days, but I've got a great social worker, Anne Mueller, in place, and she's already beginning that work, so she's going for it. Under Community Engagement, again, we're always looking for ways to expand and diversify our communication and focusing not only on our parents, but also the community at large. So my goal this year is to develop a parent and community resource center at the Cushman School. Currently, we have a little room that's off the side of our office that is utilized as a parent waiting room for students who come in just for speech and OT walk-in services. So it's a nice little area where many of our parents sit and wait, kind of making that room available to the community as well. I will be working on making this area house some information, such as articles and brochures specifically related to early childhood topics, as well as including listings of resources for parents, whether it's for specific interventionists or therapists, from that to even just where are the playgroups in the area. So that's a large focus of our work. We do have a lending library currently at Cushman anyway, with books that parents can take out. The listing is on the website. So that would be part of this resource center that I have in my head. With that, if you haven't noticed, we do have a free lending library. We actually have two outside of the Cushman School. Thankfully, our PTO was able to get that for us and Voke, so we thank them. So that's another way to connect the community to the Cushman School, not just with our parents. And if you haven't already noticed, and I know some of you are not following me, but I do have a Cushman Twitter page. Just thank you for those who are. I am not the most technically savvy person, and you can ask Mr. Rick Porter, who thankfully for him, I was able to get on Twitter, because at one point, I did have two Twitter pages, and I wasn't really sure why, but we fixed that, right? So please follow me, @McHenryCushman. And again, it's another way for parents to get information, but also the community as well. I try to retweet some early childhood articles for parents beyond the Cushman School. So that's just a few of the highlights of some of our work. Hopefully, you have the whole school improvement plan and you can see it in full. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I guess I'll start off. Just a thank you, having the opportunity to review your school improvement plan. Obviously, a lot of work, time, and effort went into this. Just a quick note, I think I love the idea of a parent resource room to kind of bring in the community and offer, just use it as a resource, really, for what it's for. But overall, you know, great job. Continue the good work.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with you.
Well, look at that!
I know. I'm going to just make a general statement right now to all of the plans that I was reading. One, I can tell by the way they're written, and because knowing the staff and the people that write these plans, this is not a document that gets written and then gets put in a drawer. And that has happened for years in education. But I have a feeling that this is really a blueprint for the future and for what you want to accomplish in our schools, and all the things you're doing are wonderful. The only question I had when reading all of these is where do you find the time? There are so many professional development opportunities going on and so many new things happening. I know you have the two curriculum meetings, you have release time day, but I still don't know how you... You know, I was once told school change was like changing a tire on a moving car. You guys are speeding. I don't know how you're going to do it, but it looks great.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I learned from the best, Dr. Karafotos. So it was a pleasure working on you and just trying to follow in your footsteps. Ms. Amaral?
Thank you.
Great job. I just, you know, love reading all the work that everyone is putting into this. I especially love the work that you mentioned in working toward, you know, differentiating between those children that are exhibiting sensory challenges that often do look like behavioral needs. And that is such a nuanced need. I'm glad that that's written into your plan, because it's certainly going to reap benefits. And obviously, the goal would be for them, the other learning opportunities, when their needs are met and supported in the appropriate way. So thank you for all the work.
Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great job. I mean, I think what really, and you explained it tonight, which was great, is the fact that you've got staff going out to professional development, and then they're coming back and, you know, teaching. So it's almost like you have teachers teaching teachers-
Exactly.
...type of deal, and, you know, giving them the knowledge that they've learned out at seminars and things, which I think is really, really well, so.
I think it's a lot more powerful when it comes from them.
Yeah.
So.
I just wanted, oh, go ahead, finish her.
No, I'm good.
I just wanted to say, I think this is great. You know, sometimes I get a little overwhelmed, particularly reading the preschool and kindergarten, where we're talking about this curriculum and this software and this. And I have to remind myself that they're having fun when they're doing this, right? It's fun, but we're figuring out ways to make them better learners, and they don't sometimes know that. So I think that's really great, and I think you guys do a wonderful job with that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, and so next up?
Good.
We have Carrer and Katie for the DeMello School.
Thank you, and good evening. Before we get into our action plans, I'd actually just like to take a quick opportunity to formally introduce the members of the committee to our new assistant principal, Ms. Coria. Mrs. Coria is not a new face to us at DeMello School. She spent 16 years as a classroom teacher there before spending the last two as principal in Bedford. We couldn't be more thrilled to welcome Liz home, and we're going to put her right to work. So she's going to talk to you a little bit about our teaching and learning portion of our session.
So it is wonderful to be home, and I'm very happy to be here. Under Teaching and Learning, we are continuing our focus on providing math PD and coaching focused on developing teachers' understanding of core ideas and understandings to support student thinking and learning in the workshop model. We know that the district is embedding quite a bit of literacy PD in its district improvement plan, and literacy is a district-wide focus. So when we got together with the leadership team at DeMello, we really felt it was vital to remain focused on strengthening our teachers' capacity to keep delivering high-quality, rigorous math instruction for this upcoming year.
And under access and equity, one of the highlights of the summer for Mrs. Coria and for me was attending a PD session on professional learning communities. The concept of a PLC is certainly not a new one, and it's one that strongly resonates with us and our core beliefs on how successful schools operate. So coupled with some new contract language surrounding the existing common planning time, we thought this was the perfect time to embrace the district's commitment to PLCs and to provide our staff some professional development on developing and sustaining the mindset of a professional learning community. So we've had a successful start to that rollout, emphasizing the fact that a PLC is not just a 40-minute block of time once a week when teachers get together, but rather a commitment to creating an environment that focuses on continuous learning of all students and staff, a culture of collaboration, and something that's results-oriented. So a few of our PD topics this year surrounding PLCs are how to successfully use data to drive our instruction, the role of climate and culture in a PLC, the shift from what I taught to what students have learned, and with that, the use of formative assessments and feedback. And then at the end of the year, looking at what our next steps would be to assure that this is a sustainable effort. I'm going to hand it back to Liz.
And finally, under community engagement, we expect to continue and enhance our Career Day guest reader and Veterans Appreciation programs at DeMello, as well as our projects with the Council on Aging. And a goal for this year would be to actively collaborate with both UMass Dartmouth and Bridgewater State University, as well as continuing to embed student enrichment opportunities, like our Beyond the Books program for the past two years, into the school day as well as after school.
So that's a little bit of a highlight of our school improvement plan. You have the full lot of there. If you have any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Why don't we start on this end of the table this time with Mr. Nunes?
Sure, thank you. Great job. Again, reading through these, and I got to echo Dr. Karafotos' comment, it's where you find time to do everything. You know, there's only 24 hours in a day, so I'm not quite sure how you get things done. But one of the things that really struck in my mind was your discussion about Mr. Roderick's and his work in the computer technology, and how's that working out?
It's fantastic. So I, we're so appreciative of the fact that we have a full-time instructional technology specialist. And one of the real benefits of having him be full-time is that he meets, he has the ability to meet with 21 classes, but he also has time then embedded in his schedule to meet with teachers. So he spends Monday afternoons down at the Cushman School, but he does have a committed 40 minutes to go into each classroom and sort of co-teach, and I think that that's really the power into what he's doing, is it's not a prep for teachers. Teachers are right in there with him and working alongside of him, which builds their capacity and the technology. Because often, we find that these little learners know more about technology than we do. So, you know, he's really up to speed and working with them, but also really showing us how we can maximize the use of technology in our curriculum. So it's really, it's been a wonderful, wonderful addition to our staff.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on that, too. I don't have to always go last, but I'll say, you know, and I appreciate seeing us two here and, you know, having a social worker, and it really highlights the team effort that goes into teaching that I want to highlight for, you know, community. We see teachers and we know teachers are important, but there's so many people working behind them and supporting them, and they're really fundamental to our student success. And it's great to see all the great things that you're able to do now having those resources in your school. So that's great.
Yeah. Ms. Amaral?
I was going to say something about Mr. Roderick, too, but I have a fortune to have a little learner at your school, and she is just so excited, and she'll come home, and she will try, you know, I can't think of escaping me right now, but there is something that they do online. But she's like learning, and she's showing me all this stuff and coding and just, she's so excited to go to school, and it's really lovely, everything that.
And that's where I said, I love to go to school.
Yeah.
Dr. Karafotos?
Okay, I would just like to comment on the way your, I think everybody's report was written. I like the way at the beginning, we went back to 2017 and listing the kinds of things that have been done as you work toward this coming year. So I appreciated that very much. And the idea of professional learning communities, that's great. We're all continuous learners, and I think the way you're going is, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you and your staff and parents are all doing. It's amazing.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to echo my colleagues' comments as well. The two pieces that I was going to touch upon was your technology integration specialist and trying to follow up a little bit on that, but you've answered my questions on that. And as well as, I think with the professional development, you hit the nail on the head with the PLCs and providing more PD for that. I think that's critical, moving forward to really engage your staff, engage teachers in the process, and make them a part of the process with the professional development. So those are my two pieces. Once again, looking over your whole plan, great job, and look forward to seeing the results.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Potter School.
Good evening. We're going to get right into it, as we're the third. Our teaching and learning focus this year, the two highlighted pieces is our continuing PD in literacy. And I applaud the commitment of the district to involve some district-wide literacy effort support. So some of our afternoon meetings will be led by the literacy coaches from across the districts in specific grade-based PD, and we appreciate that. That allows our personal, our literacy coach at Potter School to follow up and support them during the PLCs and during our other meetings, that she can expand upon those ideas. So it's really a great concerted effort. The second piece I wanted to highlight, this is our second year working with Junior Achievement, K to five. And what we found last year is that the real-world connections that the program made with our students was like none other and seamless. And so working with our math coach this year, we're going to pull out some of the lessons of JA. They have a lot of extension activities, which in their JA block, they don't get to, which would be perfect to extend the JA experience. The JA experience is actually just five lessons, so this way, the teachers will have the information to extend activities throughout the year to follow up on those JA lessons. And the tenants of JA, which is work readiness, entrepreneurship, and financial literacy, are so important for our little kids as well as our adults. So, and now to Mr. Porter.
And looking at access and equity, we want to take a look at our PBIS protocols and to see how we can support those atypical behaviors. For those who aren't familiar, with PBIS, it's a triangular approach. Our Tier One, 80 to 85 percent of our students should be responding to those protocols, 10 to 15 to respond to something called Tier Two. And I think we do at Potter very well with Tier One and Tier Two. The area we've been looking at lately is those typical Tier Three students, whose behaviors are quite atypical from their peers. So with the support of the SPED Department by Ms. Townsend and Ms. Joden, we have clinical service meetings once a month with Ms. Joden and a consultant from South Coast. But in addition to that, what we are doing at Potter is that we are meeting weekly with our team. It's myself, Mrs. Brooks, our two social workers, our school psychologists, and our nurse, where we're diving down deep with those kids to see how we can continue to support them. We started a PBIS panel this year, which met twice a month before school, where teachers could voluntarily come to talk about a difficult child. We made it a very mixed panel, so we'd have the OT on there, the speech therapist, social worker. We're expanding it this year to make it, maybe instead of talking sometimes just about a specific child, we may make it topic-specific. So if a teacher's having a problem with a child as being overly disruptive, or some other concern like that, they can come to get ideas from a representative group. We are working at continuing our Swiss data. Our Swiss data is how we track our behaviors. It's great, because we can find out time of day a child's having difficulty, location. We've made a real effort to make sure that every time a child is having difficulty, even though we may not be writing them up and sending home to the parent, we're putting in our database, so we have a complete picture of the child, so that we can craft interventions that would make sense. From that there, we're trying to make targeted behavior plans for children. We've looked at redefining our identification process for social skills groups, so again, we can really target the topics that children need to work on. And through Heidi's great scheduling, which is amazing, we've been able to expand our Second Step for our grades three, four, and five. Instead of just being a 30-minute lesson, which is all that's really needed to teach Second Step, we've added 15 more minutes, so that Mr. Shrinar, the counselor for grades three, four, and five, can talk about topics specific to those kids. So again, we're really trying to target the needs of our atypical behaviors. And lastly, under community engagement, we have to communicate differently, because our families are different than they were when many of us here started out in education. So as Mrs. McHenry mentioned, we all this summer kind of signed up for Twitter. Some of you are following me as well, some of you are not. Twitter, @Potter.
You assume that we know how to use Twitter. That's a big assumption out there.
Excuse me, I need to, how do I turn on a computer?
I will send over our technology specialists, and they will help you out.
I have it all still in paper form, Mr. Nunes, believe me.
Yes, exactly. She does. That's a story for another time. But we are trying to expand. So one of the things we're trying to have teachers not do is to text families and stuff like that, because there could be issues with that. But there's a lot of different applications now where families can be in touch with their teacher that will not have their phone number and things like that, because that's the way families respond. So the Remind app is one, and we're looking into others. We just mentioned Twitter and also Facebook. I know Mrs. Brooks and I have joined the Potter School PTO Facebook page, because that's a way to communicate with families. But we want to expand what we did with our Potter 5K. Being on that committee there, we met twice last year to put together that 5K. The bulk of our meetings were done on Facebook. And being someone that didn't think it was going to work, boy, did I have to eat a lot of crow there, because it really does work. So we have to accept the fact that our families are communicating differently, and we have to jump on board, so.
Great, thank you. We'll let Ms. Amaral, it's probably you get your thunderstorm. I mean, you have to go last, so we'll rotate. Ms. Amaral, you get to go first this time.
Great. Wonderful presentation, just great work that you are all doing. I love that you're bringing in Junior Achievement, just those critical skills, the financial literacy piece. It's just such a wonderful organization that, so glad that they're bringing them into the school. And then just diving deep, when you mentioned, you know, the PBIS with those Tier Three kids, and you talk about quality education for all, and all meaning all. Just love that, you know, creatively working with the district to find those times. Now, we don't have a full-time behavioral person on staff in the district, but you're still able to think creatively and manage those times. And it's just so important to figure those things out, so that those kiddos, you know, you talk about social-emotional needs and coming from all sorts of backgrounds, and it's wonderful that you're working towards supporting those kids.
Dr. Karafotos?
I have to thank you for the acronyms.
Yes.
I finally know what all those letters mean.
I have to keep them straight. That's how I keep them straight, as well as I always have.
You're a comedian tonight.
I'm really excited. I even wrote them down. Well, first of all, again, great work being done at the Potter School, and I love the emphasis we're putting on social-emotional development, because that's key. If a child is not ready socially and emotionally to learn, we have to find ways to help him or her do that. So I really love that. The technology, using that for communication now, it really, it's amazing, and I know all the schools are doing that. So I will have to find you on Twitter and follow you.
I'm Brooks@Potter. Porter@Potter and Brooks@Potter.
All right. Well, you're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you. So speaking to PBIS, what, this is, how many years has it been an initiative now in the district? Quite a few.
Quite a few.
Quite a few.
We've been doing Second Step beyond, before PBIS for probably close to 15 years.
I think eight years, the initiative officially came to the district.
Officially. So with that being said, have you found, because PBIS is a term that gets thrown around quite a bit, you know, and it's a district-wide initiative here, have you found a difference? Obviously, and if you have, can you explain a little bit about what's the differences that you see with the PBIS model?
Absolute difference at Potter School. And of course, that's the only school I can speak of right now. But we tracked behavior prior to this commitment, and we found pretty much, you know- But we tracked behavior prior to this commitment and we found pretty much, you know, that Einstein statement, if you continue to do the same thing over and over again, you continue to get the same results. And it really rebooted us into a different mindset when we looked at, when we did training in PBIS and really kind of brought staff and administration together to say, we've identified problem behaviors, problem areas, times of day in our school. How do we address that? And it really gave us a better focus to create our expectations at our school and to translate, how do those expectations look in the cafeteria, at recess, in the hallway, on the bus, in the classroom? And we've actually done something where, when we have our night with our PTO, we talk to parents, how do you use these expectations at home? And that really helped us. And then, as Mr. Porter said, we looked at that triangle. You know, when you're in it deep and things are not going well, you kinda think everything's not going well. And using PBIS and certainly the Swiss data, we then could identify, and we found in that triangle where your goal is per eighty percent, well, last year, when we did our data, we looked at having eighty-eight percent of our students who were in tier one, their weekly lessons with our counselors and the support of the school, that's all they needed to follow expectations, hundred-and-eighty days. And then we looked at our triangle and we were, you know, in those smaller pieces. And that's why this year, we're really honing in, what else can we do? And I really think that as a staff, we've been fortunate because our staff does not easily throw their hands up. Instead, they say, can we talk, you know, I have this situation and I need some more strategies. No, it's just fabulous. And I really do credit the foundation of PBIS for us, giving us the, the data piece really was essential for us to look at those areas, you know, so we can look at unstructured times and how do we better manage our playground? We've gotten more monitors over the year because we had the data to say, this is a problem. When you're having two people monitoring a hundred-and-forty kids, you got a problem.
So it's definitely providing, it's providing you with a lot of data to make, to make some great decisions. And it's kinda what, that was my hunch, what you've said. But I'm happy to hear that, you know, you're tweak, as you're going along, you're tweaking it and modifying it for your needs.
Absolutely. And that's why we now can look at that very top of the triangle.
Awesome. And then, as far as the community engagement goes, I'm thrilled with just pushing the, you know, the Remind apps, whether it's Class Dojo as well. I think that's another one. But it's very, I hate to say it, but it's very convenient for parents and all that. Instead of, a lot of times, getting emails, it just comes across your phone. So I'm a big proponent of that.
For the general information, it's perfect. We do encourage our teachers still to have those phone conversations. You don't want an email, a text, or something they're reading because you accidentally put it on all caps. You are not screaming. Or perhaps you are. But it's still that human factor. We still have to do that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I echo my colleagues and great job on the improvement plan. It's a quick question on, you were talking about putting, you know, with certain students, if there's issues and putting the dates and times into, is that working out so that you've got a pattern? If they're able to figure out?
We actually-
Is there something there that's going on?
Yeah. We actually, every Wednesday when we do our weekly meetings, we bring that data with us. And like I said, we had to do a little bit of a mind shift because it would start with a form that would typically go home to the family to let them know that there was a minor issue. And those forms sometimes could be a trigger for kids, but we still needed the data. So we've worked with our teachers to say, you know, it doesn't necessarily need to go home all the time. It could be a follow-up with a phone call. But we had to have that data because that gets the complete picture of the child, where the issues are. And we look at that data every Wednesday so we can craft interventions based on that.
Right down to if it's a bus time, because if we've gotten a bus slip and we know it's before school or after school, we can talk to the family about what's happening at the bus stop. Or, you know, how does their day end? And now we've sent them upset onto the bus, we're only creating a potential problem. So it's a lot of data and we use it.
Thank you.
I have to echo Mr. Oliver's thoughts about pushing things to parents. One of my son's teachers uses Remind.com and I love it. It just comes across my phone, it's there, it's gone. It's a great way to stay in touch with parents, so I'm glad to see you're pushing that. And I'm also really impressed by the ways you are sort of creatively leveraging partnerships and outside resources to enhance your curriculum. You talked about JA, but there's also the partnership with Bay Coast Bank that you have listed here. And I also noted, you're talking about using your Connex that you got through a DEF grant. And I have to tell you, after our awarding of grants, a number of administrators said to me, I didn't even know that administrators could apply for grants. And they all started going like this. So you've been very creative in coming up ways to bring resources to the whole school through partnerships and creative thinking, and I applaud you for that.
Well, once we put our STEAM blocks into the schedule, we had to support the teachers and what they needed. And that was one of, Connex was something that was going to be cost-effective, kind of unbreakable.
Yep. That's great.
Thank you, DEF.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Quinn.
Good evening. So I was thinking, when I was sitting there, that I was going to apologize to you for being and sounding redundant because I feel like a lot of the things that were said, we're gonna say up here as well. But then I thought, that's actually a positive, that it's gonna be redundant because it shows that we're kind of on the same common ground. And as, I'm a very proud member of the admin team behind me. I'm also a very proud member of the admin team in front of me that spoke tonight because I feel like we do such a great job collaborating together and working together. So I just wanted to make sure that I said that before we began. So for Quinn, under teaching and learning, we have two horizontally and vertically-aligned curriculum, academic language, and best practices. So how are we going to improve that at Quinn? One way is by providing meaningful professional development for our staff. We are currently unpacking the Lucy Cockens writing curriculum as other schools in the district are also doing. And as Heidi mentioned, we have literacy coaches that are assigned to specific grade levels across the district to support teachers and staff and allow the same message to be relayed to all staff members, which I think is really important, as well as providing targeted and differentiated instruction based on the needs of those specific grade levels. This year at Quinn, Liz mentioned the same at DeMello, we're gonna be putting a strong emphasis on math, revisiting the math workshop model. Specifically through professional development, we will be discussing number talks, Common Language, K to five, and Teaching for Understanding. And in the area of technology, we are utilizing our fabulous instructional technology specialist, Tricia Leary, as well as our amazing Kate Powers, our library media specialist, to help with unpacking the digital technology standards, focusing on digital citizenship, which is really important, and helping in supporting personalized and blended learning. Again, we've talked about this a few times already tonight, supporting the whole child. I have "whole" written in all capital letters, both at-risk, top of the grade level, and then all those awesome kids in between. So those are just a few of our objectives. And Kyle's gonna talk about access and equity.
Good evening. With access and equity, our objective with the various initiatives within the school improvement plan for access and equity is focused on how to support the child as a whole, both academically and socially, as Mrs. Thomas explained. And two priorities that we feel are extremely important is assuring that we are meeting the needs of our students at-risk as well as that we're challenging our students and enriching those to assure that, the ones that are already on grade level and above, that we have plans in place for those students as well, too. Furthermore, it is very important for us to provide a platform and various opportunities for teacher voice. The goal is to foster building-wide collaboration, consistency, common language, and school-wide expectations. And you'll notice in the school improvement plan to support these initiatives that we have implemented the school improvement team, which to go along with what Dr. Karafodis said, we truly believe that this is a working document, that getting as much staff input as we can, we currently have twelve members on our school improvement team. And we've met five or six times going back to, I'd say, May of last year to kind of revisit and brainstorm different ideas to continue to drive the school forward. So a huge thank you to the twelve members of that team for the dedication, support of coming in and really advocating for the school. On top of that, this year, we are beginning our instructional leadership team, which our first meeting will be on Wednesday. And this is open to any staff member in the entire school. And throughout the year, each month, we'll do a survey to see what are those kind of hot-button priorities in the middle of the school year. But it'll be a solutions-oriented approach that, it's open to all one-hundred-and-one staff members. Anybody can come, but we're gonna work collaboratively to see what we can do to come to a consensus so that kindergarten can hear how it affects grade five. And somewhere, we can meet in the middle to create an action plan to address all the needs that do come up throughout the course of a day. Because as it's been mentioned, there's so many different initiatives that are constantly happening. The need for that consistency is so important. And to kind of continue with that, our grade-level teams right now within the building, they have their curriculum meetings where they're usually by grade level, their lunch, their prep times, their common planning times, our professional learning communities. Our PBIS rallies that we have right now, everything that we do is by grade-level team. So our grade-level teams are extremely comfortable with one another and know exactly what it looks like horizontally on their grade-level team. But this year, through professional development, professional learning communities and other ways, we really plan to have an emphasis on vertical teaming. So whether it be social, emotional, academic, math, science, you name it, that they can hear where things are unpacked at those grade levels. And it's only gonna be better practice within their own classroom so they know what to spend more time on, or just to have that conversation other than just their grade-level team. So we're excited to begin that. And then with response to intervention, that has been a priority this year to, we just have a consistent time that we're very fortunate to have three reading specialists that are now consistently going through, we call it, they're sweeping the building consistently at the same time. And we've triangulated our data so that the students that require those interventions are being seen consistently, five days a week at the same time. And as Audra mentioned, thankfully, having Tricia Leary here, she's already doing an amazing job. And she's got so many ideas between PLCs, professional development, and going in and coaching of ways during this time to really challenge those on-level or above students with blended learning opportunities and personalized learning opportunities. It's the way her and I were talking about it the other day, in brainstorming this, it's almost like she has a drop-down menu of all these different things, grade-level appropriate, that teachers could be doing based on the students in front of them. So as a school, we're very excited about all of these different opportunities.
Good evening. The last objective is community engagement. As we were working through the school improvement plan, we really felt that we consider community engagement to be a strength at Quinn. Our initiative this year is to really enhance the pieces that are already in place on top of the new initiatives we're putting forth. So with that, we would like to recognize PTO. As always, they are a huge asset to us. And we really appreciate everything that they do to bring the community into the school. Outside of PTO, we have multiple parent engagement nights that we are really proud of, the Literacy Night and a Museum of Kindness and Caring. Also, our teachers put on multiple showcases throughout the year where they invite parents in and parents are able to view student work. Something else we're really proud of, last year, we implemented the fifth-grade peer leadership program. This program was a huge support to the school and the community as a whole. These students that were part of this program, they raised money for various charities. They spread kindness by making bookmarks with positive messages for the library. And they also participated in a peer reading program where they read to lower grade levels. We are definitely very excited that we will be having that leadership program this year again. Also, last year, we started inviting parents to attend the PBIS rallies. They actually had an opportunity to surprise students when their students were receiving an award. Based on feedback from parents and staff, we will continue to involve parents and guardians in the PBIS rallies. This year at Quinn, we are really putting a great emphasis on highlighting the work that is being done daily. We are updating our Twitter page weekly. We will be keeping our website current. And we will also be sending home a monthly newsletter that highlights the positive work and multiple events that happen. Also, this year, the child protection units are new at the elementary school level. So we, our outreach workers next week will be presenting to parents. They will be presenting the importance of the lessons and fielding questions from parents as they come up. And lastly, one of our parents on our school council works at UMass Dartmouth and he has reached out to form a partnership to see how the university can support the various STEM initiatives. So those are just some highlights that we're really proud of to move forward for community engagement.
So, Dr. Karafodis, you get the first shot this slide.
Okay. Well, again, a great, great job you've done. A couple of things that you mentioned that I think were wonderful is the level of collaboration you have, not also among your staff, but also among each other. I think that's great. I also noted on your plan, the digital citizenship. I found that very interesting. Could you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yep. So Kate Powers, our librarian, along with Tricia Leary, are really putting a point of emphasis on that. And it's really about kind of internet awareness and all the different things that students get into. So Tricia's implementing a curriculum that I believe is new this year. And then Tricia's kind of doing a double dose of that when she goes into classrooms. And another goal that we have as well, too, is last year, the outreach work is across the district, had put a proposal together to see if we could get a guest speaker to come in to talk about internet awareness and the different things that students can be exposed to, whether it be on a tablet or an iPhone, just to bring as much as an importance for the students, but for the adults as well, too. So that, there's posters that will be hanging all around the building and we just think it'll be a great message for all students in the building.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, all of you and your teachers and staff and parents, everyone, for the great job you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
So I feel like a little bit of a broken record as well as, you know, once again, great job. Lots of moving parts, you know, lots of different pieces of your school improvement plan. One of the things that stuck out to me was your instructional leadership team meetings that are being held optionally. I think that's a great idea to, I think you used the word a hot button or hot topics. You know, sometimes things need to be addressed, and what better way than to, you know, bring everyone together to solve a problem? So I think that's a, that's a great idea. One of the other things that kind of stuck out as well in your SIP was just continuing with the family engagements. Parents, you know, parents love to turn out after hours during school. Also, surprising, I think that's a great idea, surprising the students that, you know, if they're being recognized for an award at a PBIS rally. So great job, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Nunes?
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues, broken records here tonight with everything that we've had and such. Again, I like the openness of the meetings and everybody brainstorming an idea. You know, somebody has, kind of said to the new teachers, you know, use the mentors. And sometimes they don't have an answer, but somebody in the building or somebody else has got an answer because they've run across it type of deal to get them through. So I think that's fantastic. Of course, I've known Tricia Leary for a lot of years and she seems to be as energetic now as she was, you know, when she first started. And I'm thrilled with what, you know, she's doing and what she's trying to help the students and staff out with. And, you know, your librarians in the middle of things, too. It's just a fantastic job. Thank you.
I love your school motto, "I respect you, I respect me, and I respect everything I see." That's wonderful. A little bit of a repetitive note I was gonna comment to about that, just that mentioning of that vertical team across the grade level. Because to John's point, seeing a trend, seeing a strength and a weakness throughout a class in a certain area, it's so, it's so enriching to know that you can get that feedback from the staff as the grades go on. I love, Audra, you talk about, you mentioned through all of the social-emotional emphasis, the whole child and those personalized learning. I just love this, I get so excited about this, just educating the whole child and then building upon their strengths and then supporting their weaknesses and where they're struggling. And then just that team approach, this, you have six hundred and thirty, how many students do you have?
About six hundred and forty students.
Just even, just thinking back to my experience here, it's such a warm, small community, a tight-knit community for such a large student body. Just keep it up. Great job.
Thank you.
So I just wanna say, I'm really excited to see you're highlighting differentiated instruction, in particular with respect to spelling. Personally, I took my first, my son was in first grade. I am not a speller, all right? Spell check is my friend. Spell check is my friend. He got his spelling gene from my husband apparently. And we had such struggles the first few weeks of school because he would get everything right on the pre-test and then he'd have to do his spelling homework. And it was a fight and it was a fight. And then we finally figured out a differentiated plan for him. And I looked it up, I posted, this was a spelling word sentence in first grade. "The lieutenant arrived in the familiar town to properly memorialize numerous soldiers. He would come home and he would be excited to spell." Like, I can't spell those words. It made a world of difference for us, right? He was happy and excited to do his spelling. I was happy because I didn't have a crying child at my counter every night. And so I'm really happy that you singled out the spelling, but just to see that across the curriculum because it's so important for all of our kids and for their families, right? It really can make a difference when you find the right level of instruction for those kids. So thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you.
And PLS? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add that I think a few of you commented on the consistency that you're seeing throughout. And the district has made a really concerted effort to bring those specific topics to everyone and doing a lot of work around that. So you heard all those familiar themes about the PLC work, the digital literacy and the instructional technology support with, of course, the added positions at the middle school this year. We've been talking about bringing all of those folks together to create that curriculum and make sure, again, all third graders are getting this, all fourth graders are getting that. So we're seeing a lot of good vertical work on that. CPU units or the child protection units, our social workers came together over the summer and able to implement those in our schools consistently now. And again, the PBIS and the SCL and just all the literacy and math work that Tracy's done with the team. So I feel we're in a really good place as far as bringing a lot of consistency throughout the elementary schools. And I know teachers really appreciate even be able to come together at grade level and with their colleagues. So it's great work, it's good work.
Thank you. All right, so next on our agenda, we have the coordinated program review presentation from Ms. Cabral Townsend.
And I think Ms. Jodwin's here as well.
Nice.
Coming up, okay. Moral support.
That's good.
The more the merrier up here.
So I'd like to thank the committee tonight for giving me an opportunity to present a little bit to you about our recent coordinated program review process. I have just a few slides here to go over just in brief bullet points related to our recent visit from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, well, just to review, the three pieces that the CPR looks at are civil rights, special education and English learner education. So breaks into those components. There are a variety of components that are looked at within those three areas that I just mentioned that go everywhere from actually reviewing student records, all the way through interviews with parents, interviews with teachers, review of obviously previous reports that have been conducted. The coordinated program review cycle is a six year cycle. There's a full review every six years and a mid-cycle review every three years. When the mid-cycle review occurs in those three year increments, it's in, just in special education, the full cycle which incorporates civil rights and ELL is not in the mid-cycle. So this is just, I know all of you have, have these slides, but we basically take kind of that coordinated effort to make sure that we're looking at data on a variety of levels. So essentially, just to note a little bit about what happened prior to. So a great deal of work that's related to coordinated program review happens well before the state visits. So obviously the state did have their visit in April of 2017, but approximately a year before, actually a year and a half before, Michelle Roy and I started with the self-assessment phase. So in the self-assessment phase, we had to submit a web-based self-assessment evidence for 59 areas in special education, 26 areas of civil rights and 18 areas of ELL. So we had to provide evidence related to all of those indicators, upload them electronically to the department. And then the department spent just about, just under a year reviewing those records before they ever came on site. That's a big piece of the final report is what they reviewed during that self-assessment phase. Parents are a critical piece of the coordinated program review puzzle. Both informally and formally, we did have a, an article or a press release in the local paper explaining that the visit was occurring and giving the information of DESI if parents wanted to call directly. In addition, there are surveys that certain parents of both special education students and students who are English language learners receive surveys which they were able to submit. Any surveys related to coordinated program review go directly to DESI. We didn't see them, we don't know who returned them or what was written. They actually get sent right to the department. As well as during their onsite visit, there were interviews with parents of students with disabilities as well as parents who are students who are English language learners. So I think all of you know this, but just as a recap, the week that Department of Ed was onsite was April 24th through the 27th. They were scheduled for the full week, but in reality, they were here actually about three and a half days. So on April 24th, they did have a three person team. So they essentially divide and conquer as far as how they cover the different schools. On April 24th, DHS, Potter and Cushman had visits, again, from different team members, different, one of those three team members. On April 25th, DHS, DMS and DeMello had visits. On April 26th, there were representatives at DMS and Quinn. And then the final day they were here, which was a Thursday, April 27th, it was our chairperson, Michael Barrett, having an exit interview with the central office administration. So there were no schools visited that day, but the Department of Ed was onsite really to just wrap up with us, have that exit interview opportunity and then get sent off. This is a list and I'm not going to read it to you, but there were many, many, many people involved in this process. And so I wanted to take this slide and this opportunity to just say a thank you, thank you. Many of the faces in the room in front of me were, actually just about all of the faces, were interviewed during this process as well as being hosts to these different team members that were visiting their schools, that were visiting classrooms, meeting with teachers. And so really the staff did the most amazing job. We had a wonderful turnout, you know, we had an optional night where those being interviewed could come and get more information if they had questions. We had excellent turnout, I think we had close to 30 people there. So, but these are the different roles that were interviewed. DESI, you know, always indicates that they want to see a really good diverse group of staff members. So we made sure that we gave them that. So administrators, teachers, related service providers, several teacher assistants and of course, parents. So the way the coordinated program review process works is there are four ratings. So for each of those indicators, as I mentioned, for example, the Special Ed had 59 of them. Each of those 59 gets a rating. The rating choices are commendable, implemented, partially implemented or not implemented. And so essentially when the report is published, they go bit by bit through all of the civil rights, all of the ELL and all of the special education and give them a rating for each. So I'm happy to report that the Dartmouth Public School District received a rating of implemented for all 59 special education indicators and most of our civil rights, almost all of our civil rights and ELL criteria. So we had an excellent, excellent coordinated program review final report. I could not be more proud of the work that was done by all of the staff. The central office team was amazing, all seven of us really working together and all, right. We had, exactly, we had our orientation on the snow day. And so all seven of us were there while Michael Barrett was giving us the orientation. So it was a lot of hard work. We had some minor findings which will be addressed in the next school year as our next steps. And just to briefly summarize what those next steps are going to be, the district is working to create a well-balanced and developmentally appropriate curriculum for our English language learners. So that, that's a big piece of work and they're doing fantastic job. Michelle Roy's doing an amazing, amazing work with that. The district is also moving forward with planning a formal program evaluation as it relates to English language learners. So that's something else that's being done. And the third next step will actually end up on your agenda. For the October meeting, we are looking to amend our elementary handbooks as well as our middle school handbook, which would include our physical restraint prevention and behavior support policy. And I believe many of you know, when you approve, the high school has already had that change made. It's just that we need to add an addendum to the elementary and middle, seeing as though they had already been published at the time that, that this information was given to us. So we would need to amend those, but I believe we're looking to do that at our next meeting.
Questions?
Questions?
Anyone?
Well, I'll start by saying that congratulations. If anyone thinks that this is an easy process, I think the most complicated Schedule C tax return is nothing on this. And when I, when I work with, with families professionally, you know, districts don't want to do wrong by a family. I mean, they're following to, but you're talking about dotting eyes and timelines and lots of things that need to be put in place and then proven in the evidence. So really, congratulations. Thank you so much. Great job. Much appreciated.
Comments, questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm just curious about the developmental appropriate curriculum for English language learners. Is there something out there already? Has the state developed anything or are you going to, how do you go about starting that?
So I know Ms. Roy has been doing a lot more work on the development of the curriculum. So I apologize if I defer to you. I do know that the state has curriculum frameworks as they relate to English language learners. The work that's being done, I understand, is our department. You know, you always want it, the curriculum to be developed with the teachers in mind that are, so I know that it is, they're actually meeting pretty regularly throughout the school year to develop something that's standards based because they, obviously they're out there, but, but also really meets the needs of our individual ELLs. Because, you know, not every subset is identical district to district.
So how many ELL teachers do we have now in the district?
ELL teachers?
ELL.
Four. Four teachers. We have four teachers and we, we sent, one of our teachers actually got accepted to the, what they have as model curriculum units now from the state for ESL. And she was trained this summer. And we also have one secondary and one elementary that are going to be serving on what they have as an ELL think tank on the South Coast and South Shore that are going to be meeting to develop curriculum as well. And they're aligning it with the language standards of the ELA curriculum. So we'll be busy, we'll be writing several units, it'll be a three year process.
Can I, can I follow up on that? I mean, one of the challenges sometimes I think in a district where you don't have as large of an ELL population is you still have a lot of diversity in languages. How many different languages are our ELL students coming in speaking? Do we have a sense of that and what are we covering with just four ELL teachers?
I know, I believe in talking to Nellie, she's translated in at least six.
So we have Vietnamese, Chinese, Portuguese, Spanish. There's at least four or five.
Yeah, and that can be tricky too when you have.
And we have.
When they're all using the same alphabet, it's easy. But when they're using different alphabets, that could be a real challenge. So I appreciate that.
They have five different levels of their language development. So because we're a low incident district, we often service multiple levels in the same group. We try to cluster them, you know, the ones and twos, three fours and fives. Whereas larger districts may just have, you know, a level one group or a level two group. So it's more, we're going to have to do more of.
It can be a challenge, yeah, for sure. Yeah. Other questions, comments?
Just congratulations. You know, CPR is no easy task and the amount of documents and time and effort that goes into this is quite a bit. So.
I appreciate it.
Thank you to you and the administrative team and the faculty and staff in the district.
Absolutely. It was very much a joint effort. It was a huge team of folks working together and working collaboratively, something we're very proud of.
I'll echo my colleagues', it's a great job, you know, for, for everything. You know, auditors have to find something. Having been there, done that, auditors have to find something. So I'm not concerned about that. One quick question I have is the surveys that went out to, by DESI to the families. Do you know how many they sent out and how many were, do they tell you that number?
I don't know how many were returned. I do know sent out for special education, there were 25 sent out. I do not know the return number. And I believe ELL, they sent 10. I don't know, they didn't give us the indication of how many were returned.
Okay, I was just, again, just curious.
Yeah, so about 35 surveys in all went out.
They did commend us on the, the interviews with the parents for Special Ed and ELL. That was one of the areas they cited as positive, strong.
They also, I remember the exit interview, one of the things I was really pleased with, Michael Barrett commended our staff on what he saw as in every school, the inclusiveness. Students really participating, all students participating in all activities and in the classrooms.
Absolutely.
He really made that a strong point.
Very impressed with that.
Yeah, very impressed with how we include all students and try to meet their needs, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the middle school roof. I will turn it over to Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkin. So we have a resolution at your place. Sorry, it didn't make the packet. We got the clearance from the architects at about four o'clock today to bring this forward. So it's resolution number 18 dash six. It is a resolution awarding a contract for the roof replacement to the Dartmouth Middle School. Whereas bid invitations for roof replacement to the Dartmouth Middle School were duly advertised and the six bid proposals received were opened at 2:00 PM on September 19th, 2017. And whereas the bids from all responding bidders were reviewed and the lowest responsive and responsible bidder that met the published specifications was Greenwood Industries, Inc. Therefore, be it resolved that a contract for the roof replacement to the Dartmouth Middle School be awarded to Greenwood Industries of Worcester, Mass. Based on Dartmouth Public Schools specifications dated August 16th, 2017.
entertain a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Amaral. Are there any questions or discussion? Mr. Nunes.
The, these are fantastic numbers. Type of deal I.
They are, they're.
Flabbergasted.
Yeah, we were very pleased. I mean, we, we thought from a, from our experience doing the other roofs, we felt that the estimates were high. So the, the work that the architect did and the estimator, we really did feel that they were high. We had done some preliminary estimates with another engineer who we had previously worked with and they, these actually came out closer to that than what our current architect really, really had. But yes, we're pleased. It's about 70% of what we budgeted. So it's, it's almost one and a half million dollars less than, than what we.
Cost of a stadium field.
Exactly my thoughts.
I was just, well, no, and technically, you're correct. Correct me if I'm wrong, this 3.3 million to Greenwood, okay? We're getting 50, 50% back from the state.
Correct.
So we're only, you know, out 1.7, 1.6 million dollars.
Right, well, we also have the architect fee and the project manager fees. And so there are other expenses built in. But right now, including this, we're under four and a half million dollars. And that's, you know, including a little bit of contingency money. And right now, we have authorized the town meeting, through town meeting, $5,895,000. So we're. It's certainly in the right direction, the savings. So we were pleased with that.
Savings is the right way, yes.
We were pleased with that, yeah.
Geez, there's the stadium and the lights.
Other questions, Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So would this put us on track for late spring, early summer start date?
Yeah, most of the construction would start right after school lets out. It's just too disruptive to really do a whole lot with school in session. But we will do some over April vacation and maybe some second shift work after, you know, kids are gone for the day. Things like masonry and some different things that we can get a head start on prior. But most of the work will be during the summer.
Excellent. This is a project that is much, much needed. I'll be happy to see the refs having to not stop the basketball games and go mop up the water on the floors and all that. Great to hear and nice work in putting this project together.
Dr. Karafnas.
Yes, they plan to have everything done by the end of summer.
That's, that is the plan. So what we would, we would hope that they would have what we call substantial completion, which is not completion. But it's. which is not completion, but it's pretty close to completion. So it's where you have punch list items and smaller, smaller things. You may still be doing some flashing work and some, but yes, the roofing itself will be completed. That's.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this.
Welcome. It's exciting.
Any other questions on the motion? All right, so hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
All right, so next we'll move on to old business. Speaking of terrfs and fields, it is time for an update from our turf and field committee member, Mr. Oliver.
At the last minute, I had a prior, or actually a work thing that came up. So I was unfortunately unable to be there, but Mr. Kylie is part of the committee. He filled me in in detail, and I'm looking forward to a follow-up meeting with the committee afterwards. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Kylie if he doesn't mind speaking on this.
Sure, thank you. So we had some discussion about some other projects that we had done research on throughout the state at that meeting, and looking at, with an eye towards fundraising, and how those projects incorporated fundraising as a component. What we've found was that, in general, most projects did not incorporate a significant amount of fundraising. Most did incorporate some fundraising, but certainly a small percentage of the overall cost of the project. We had much discussion and were very pleased at that point. We had just heard that the $50,000 was going to be included as a recommendation on the October 17th town meeting warrant, so we talked about that. The committee, at that time, asked me to make sure that anyone who's attending town meeting, they're asking to be prepared, please be prepared to speak up in favor of the project. The $50,000, we talked about me drafting an RFP for a designer, consultant, to look at things, basically to look at first the existing conditions that are in place, look at the lighting, the stands, the whole, the entire facility, the field, obviously. Look at options for each component, and come up with some recommendations, and some sort of conceptual design drawings that could be used to further advance the project. Obviously, you know, it is a big project, and to be able to move forward, we feel like this committee needs to have something that they can sell the community and say, this is what we have, and this is what it could be, and sort of a vision for the future there. So that's really where we are with the committee. They talked about a lot of details in terms of that, certain things that we wanted the designer to take a look at, like potentially phasing options of the project. But in general, the focus is, let's get the $50,000, let's have me draft the RFP, and then we'll have the designer selection committee hire an architect and to work with the committee.
So what do you think the timeline would be for a designer? How long do you think that would take?
November.
For them to produce the report, you think, that quickly?
A lot of that depends on the committee, and how, and how, how much back and forth the committee is gonna want. I think that, you know, a lot of designers have done similar projects to this. This is not something that, you know, is gonna be new for the folks that hopefully, you know, we have experienced designers that apply, so I think, you know, I think it could be produced in a fairly expedient manner.
The only reason why I ask is because it's my understanding, I was talking to Mr. Oliver about this, is that we will, in fact, be having three town meetings this year, and now all of a sudden, we have money left over from the middle school, which may not be left over, but particularly if we're talking about phasing the project, there is some possibility to start some work on this if we could get something on the agenda for the March town meeting, which would be such a huge step for this community to see some progress. And particularly, if we wanted to incorporate some public fundraising, it's easier to say, look what we've started. Can you contribute this, than to say, well, we may do it at some point in time. So, you know, that's probably really pie in the sky, but it may produce a window for us to actually get something done.
I think it's absolutely worth at least talking about, having a frank conversation about. I'm not sure when our next meeting is, Mr. Kylie.
We actually don't have one scheduled. We really wanted to see exactly where this, you know, hopefully that's supported on October 17th, and then from there, we would have a meeting shortly thereafter. But really, the next step is for me to draft the RFP.
We've gotta get this done. This is priority one.
Right.
But I agree, Dr. Jenkins, that I think that's definitely worth having a discussion about, you know, if time allows, if it fits into our timeframe.
We gotta just reposition, reappropriate the funds.
Right, but we could, we would have the opportunity to do that at a March town meeting, which would allow some work to be done this summer, which would be, I'm not gonna hold my breath, but it would be nice.
Potentially.
It's a dream, right?
It's, I agree.
Yeah, you could do that.
Dr. Karafas.
Mr. Kylie, do you know if the committee would be able to get something out to be put in the town meeting package about the pros and cons of this?
The committee had some discussion about that. What they, what they had asked was that I be prepared to present a sort of brief summary of the steps that the committee's taken and where we are today. So I'm in the process of doing that and sharing it with the committee, but that's what they asked.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, everybody has faith in you.
Wow, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's my understanding too, in talking to FinCom, that they have written their recommendation to open up to that sort of presentation for you. And I think it might be helpful if we asked Mr. White and Mr. Kingsland to try to maybe be there for a little bit, because I know it would be really important to them, and maybe, you know, the athletic director. I don't know if we can make that happen, but we can take a look at that.
Yeah.
Mr. Kingsland and Mr. Karen.
Yep, yep, for sure, if we can make that happen. All right, any other questions, comments? I want to thank you both for your work on this. You know, it's good to see us maybe making some progress on this.
I hope so.
Hopefully $50,000, that would be a really good start.
And I think the committee is just the right size that we're able to, I think, make some progress on this.
Did you get that information? Did I send you an email with the, because you and I had had a discussion about schools that I'd be familiar with, with artificial terms.
Yes, you did, you sent that to me, yes. I got it, yeah. That was a while back.
Yeah, but the way it's, you know, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, excellent. So next we have a new business, a superintendent's update of things. So I've begun my work now with my admin team as far as smart goal development, so we've had some good conversations with that. And it's nice to see that, obviously, the smart goals are matching, aligning with what they're talking about in their strategic plan, the school improvement plans. You've heard a lot about professional development, and I'd just like to mention the differentiated professional development that's been happening. I think it's a really great aspect to what we offer. So it's the after-school PD, and illiteracy coaches have been running some of those, and they've done many things, phonemic awareness, writers workshop, et cetera. But feedback has been really good. Folks have been able to attend something that they really find that they need and worthwhile. Our Highlander work has started. That is the group that's working with us on personalized and blended learning. We decided, I don't know if I said this the last time, we decided to forego some work with the elementary at this time, given all of the work that they're doing in other areas, and we wanted to kind of make sure they're really ready for that. So what this plan does include is work with our district leadership team. We'll be having professional development on personalized and blended learning with the group. We've already established dates. Our middle school has met. They've got three groups of teachers that have already met and working on developing units. They'll be observing each other's classrooms coming up. So there's many, many meetings taking over, taking place over the next year. Observing the classrooms, providing feedback for each other, and working together on developing those lessons. And at our high school, we're looking at it from two views. One is training the instructional leadership team. I don't know what Ross has called it now. Changed, lead teacher team. All these talk about acronyms, we're changing names. The lead teacher team, and they're, they have had a meeting so far, and they're going to be saying things, getting professional development on how to coach effectively in the classroom, because part of their job description is about coaching in the classroom and working with teachers on that. And the other piece at the high school is, as we've spoken about before, is the design team, which is looking at designing those STEM path, well, we're calling them STEM pathways, innovative pathways in our high school. So that work has begun, and feedback is good. In reference to, relative to the SIPs you see, we've started at central office, we've been updating the school, our strategic plan as well, because, again, you mentioned it's not a dead document, it doesn't sit in a drawer. So we've been working on that, and we'll be presenting the, what we have done, and we kind of amaze ourselves, I think, sometimes, when we get together and talk about it. What we have done and what our movement forward for the district, the overview is, so that will be coming up. We've been working on that. And I wanted to mention, at the high school, something that's really cool going on is, you might have seen it in the principal's Friday Focus, but the pineapple charts that they've implemented. And folks are able to put on the chart, what they might be showcasing in their classrooms, and inviting, people can take a look at that. At period three, Mr. so-and-so is doing this, and they can go in and watch. So it's, I think it's really started a real, inspiring some culture of collaboration, and people taking risks of seeing other folks come in and, you know, inviting people into the classroom. So I'm looking forward to stopping in on some of those. So I like that, like that new, new thing that they're doing there. And just the last thing, I sent you all an email, but as we know, our dear Joan is leaving us so very shortly. And I did implement the interview process, and we had about 70 applicants for that position. You can imagine how difficult it was to sort through, never mind the paper sorting. And then we had two rounds of interviews where we interviewed 14 folks beginning, and then narrowed it down to four, and brought them back for a long, lengthy chat and a little writing assignment, et cetera. And anyway, when it all came, when it all planned out, it was Kate Gunther, as I let you know, who obviously has been working in Jim's office for the last six years, so now we have to move on.
Oh, you'll find Jim's.
He's gonna be stuck, so. But anyway, that's all I have.
So for my report, I will just follow up on this, and I would like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Boucher on her last. We're gonna all try to get through this, Ms. Boucher, without crying. I think the five of us feel like we're gonna cry that we're leaving, although we know Kate will do a wonderful job. You have meant so very much to us, and we have something for you, but the chair of the committee was kind of a bonehead and forgot to bring it with her. But the good news is that means I get to come and see you again, to share it with you. But I would like to take a moment just to recognize you here this evening, and so I'll start with Mr. Noons here. We're all gonna try not to cry, right?
Yeah. The problem with being part Irish, and I won't get into that, but that's it. But I did write it out, because other than that, I would never get through it. Joan, Webster's Society defines professional as, quote, "exhibiting a courteous, conscientious, and generally businesslike manner in the workplace." You certainly are that. As a school committee member, it's been a privilege to have you as our secretary all these years. You know you've been around as a committee member when you have to say goodbye to your third secretary. I've had the privilege of having three of them, and I mean this in all seriousness, three wonderful secretaries. Started out with Elaine Martin, and then with Mrs. Terry McManus, and now you, type of deal. As Chris eloquently stated at your retirement party, whenever you call the superintendent's office, Joan's your first point of contact, and the voice you hear is hers, and it's always pleasant. You know, Dr. Gifford's office, may I help you? And with my warped sense of humor, I sometimes sit there and go, no, not really, you know, but, or I'm beyond help, type of deal. But you're never too busy to help anyone who calls, and that was obvious by the conversations and the talking and the speeches that went on at your retirement party. On a personal note, I want to thank you for your kindness and friendship all these years. I wish you nothing but good health and happiness, and you all deserve retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. Ms. Amaral.
Oh, to all of that. It's been a pleasure to know you, Joan, and, you know, just that, that voice, that pleasant voice, no matter the tide, you know, very comforting and supportive, and just, you've been wonderful, so thank you for all of it.
Dr. Karafas.
Well, I was fortunate to be a principal when Mrs. Boucher was hired, and she's helped me out in so many different ways. And as everybody has said, and everybody knows how kind and thoughtful Joan is to everybody. And in our schools, it's our secretaries who the parents first meet and get an impression about what we're all about. And with our district, Joan, it's been you, and you've done a remarkable job, and I've been proud to know you, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Karen.
And I have more Kleenex if you need it.
Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're not leaving. That's it. It's not happening.
I don't remember approving that retirement.
No. Neither do I. Couple of things, Joan. Anytime that I get a parent concern or a parent question, listen, just all you gotta do, I said, have you contacted the superintendent's office? You're gonna speak to Joan Boucher. She's a lovely woman. Press one, and one again. But in all honesty, Joan, you are, you're top-notch. You really are. You are, you are nothing but a professional in every sense of the, of the word, and you're truly gonna be missed. And what I'd like to do at this time is just read a little excerpt from my, my speech that I gave at Joan's retirement party that I was lucky enough to attend. "It is with mixed emotions that I stand before this crowd of Joan's colleagues, family, and friends, who are all here for one thing, to celebrate," I've lost my, "the professional career of Joan Boucher. When I was putting together this speech, there were two words that continued to come to mind when thinking of Joan. They were professional and humanitarian. Little did I know 15 years ago, upon meeting Joan, that I would find someone who truly cares about each and every staff member in this district, as well as parent concerns. I bet if I asked Joan this minute, which staff recently had kids, are having kids, took a leave of absence, or how someone's sick family is doing, she would be able to describe their situation in detail. When I think of Joan Boucher, I think of the voice and face of the Bush Street Central Office. There's not one time that you can call the superintendent's office and not get a pleasant voice on the other end being Joan. From a school committee standpoint, she is a pleasure to work with and goes above and beyond her responsibilities. There are numerous times she would be sending out school committee packets on the weekends at all hours of the day. We would even tell her, and I know I would, it can wait until Monday, but she never listens. She has a great deal of institutional knowledge from her time in Dartmouth, and I'm quite worried about how much will be leaving with her. Through all the superintendents she has worked for, she has been the constant in that office. And it was, it was great, great to see the picture of you and all the superintendents that you have worked for, with the exception of Dr. Russell, that couldn't make it. Like I said on opening day several years ago, Joan Boucher has been the glue in so many ways that has held the school department together. On behalf of the school committee, Joan, we wish you nothing but happiest happiness in your retirement."
Thank you.
So.
So I'll just conclude. I get my turn before we get to clap, right? Because I do want to say nice things about Joan. But I also want to say, I don't think sometimes, maybe parents, people outside the district, know how much Joan does. They see, you know, maybe her little sign that says Recording Secretary, but she's so much more than that. She is our secretary, and we would be lost without her, as well as the Dr. Giffords. But she's also a counselor, right? She's a shoulder. I think people call Ms. Boucher with problems, and she's a problem solver. She is an HR director. She just does so many things, and she does them all so well. So the district is losing a lot. We wish you the happiest of retirements, although, you know, if there's ever a. Um, we wish you the happiest of retirements, although, you know, if there's ever a time you might wanna come and sit in this part of the table, your institutional knowledge would be much welcomed. Um, but seriously, we are so appreciative of everything you have done for us and for this district and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
All right, and so with that, um, would you like to say anything, Ms. Boucher? Mr. Nunes made me ask that. I figured that would be your response, so I'm gonna throw him under the bus on that one.
That's funny.
Um, I have one other thing in my report. Um, I would like to remind everyone that the DEF is doing our spelling bee this year. Um, I know Ms. Brooks has planted the seed of, um, all you putting in, uh, you know, applications next year, but on November second, we will be having our spelling bee. If you want information about sponsoring a team, feel free to contact me, that's three hundred dollars. Um, for our teachers and our district staff and all of that, um, we obviously have sponsors for the teams, so what we're looking for you is, um, to help us find, uh, teams and put teams together, because that's what makes the spelling bee so fun. Um, so we have a Facebook page if anybody has any questions or people are welcome to email me about that. So, does anybody else have anything else? Mr. Nunes?
Just have one thing, Madam Chair. Uh, this Saturday night at, uh, the football stadium, starting at, uh, six o'clock, the Music Association's gonna be hosting their, uh, annual U.S. band show. Uh, there are twelve bands, uh, ten, this, uh, weekend, we're very fortunate, they're coming from all over, including New Jersey. Uh, one coming up, uh, Dartmouth is going on at nine twenty-five and, uh, the gates will open at five o'clock, so if you're looking for a great evening of entertainment, the weather's long-range forecast is gonna be beautiful, so, uh, hopefully come on out and, uh, support, in all seriousness, all the students from all the schools, 'cause they do a wonderful job.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else to add?
Um, if I, if I may, I just would like to sort, mention that on October fifth, the, uh, the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council is holding their, um, first meeting from six to seven thirty. Um, Potter School is graciously offering their space. Um, and really that's for, for, um, you talk about vertical alignment within, uh, the district, when you, the parents that are, are part of the CPAC are really a wealth of knowledge, um, and we collaborate really well with, with, um, you know, administration and teachers and support staff. Uh, so just if any parents, uh, have a child that, that may be struggling, um, not necessarily on an IEP, but just have some questions about what kind of resources are in the community, you're welcome to attend on October fifth, uh, at Potter School. There's always refreshments and, uh, lots of laughs and, and just learn about what the CPAC is, so encourage folks.
What time again?
Um, we are changing our, um, our time this year. Uh, six to seven thirty, uh, would be the time that, um, you know, and quickly, we are also, uh, if anyone's interested in volunteering for the wonderful event that, uh, we hold with support of, from the district on October twenty-second, you can email dartmouthcpac@gmail.com. Um, if you would like to, you know, volunteer some time on the, the Sunday, October twenty-second, we are, uh, excited to, uh, host that fifth annual resource fair. We met with, uh, admin and, uh, just have a wonderful collaboration and lots of people involved with helping and a hundred and fifty, uh, tables total of just a wealth of under-one-roof, um, important resource connections for all, all families and staff, honestly, so that's it.
Great, thank you. So, um, I'll remind everyone that, um, next Monday at six o'clock, we are having a working meeting, a working session, um, in the Quinn Community Room to talk about the facilities, the master plan, and then our next meeting is the sixteenth. Okay, great, the night before town meeting, we'll get to see a lot of each other. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations with union personnel not to return into open session.
So moved.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Dr. Karafodis. Any discussion? Um, hearing none, may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Boucher? Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Karafodis?
Yes.
Ms. Amaral?
Yes.
Mr. Nunes?
Yes.
Dr. Jenkins? Yes, thank you, everyone.